We have all the persons are present. We can, we'll open the public, well, the next item is a public hearing on the 2024 City Wisconsin Rapids proposed budget. I'll call three times for people in favor or against, but if counsel will indulge me, I'll just recognize people that want to be recognized and speak, if that works like we do before. Okay. So I don't, at 6:03, let's open the public hearing. I'll call this, if anybody wishes to speak against this budget, if you want to raise your hand and come on forward and make sure the microphone's on, Elizabeth, then, if you could state your name and address too, please.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Wayland and my address is 211 15th Avenue North, Wisconsin Rapids, Wisconsin. So, I know it's probably unusual that I want to speak against things, usually I'm speaking for things. But, the point that I wanted to make, once again, I have, I'm a lovely, I'm a record keeper, I have my lovely tax receipts from 2003 that shows that my taxes were, on my house on 15th Avenue there, were $1,676. 2003, so 20 years ago. What do you think my taxes are this year, this past year? Any guesses? They were $1,710. Thirty-four dollars difference. How are we funding our city adequately with only $34 increase in property taxes over 20 years? Now, I know a lot of people are tax hawks, but honestly, I want my city to be well-funded. I want us to have cushions. I want us to have services. I want us to have an awesome library. I want us to have streets that are, you know, well-kept, bike-friendly, and safe for pedestrians. I want us to have a police department and a fire department that are, have the resources that they need to keep us safe, but also, you know, to, you know, make sure that we are having the best people and that we are funding, you know, them with retirement and adequate wages. And I don't think we can do that on $34 increases over 20 years. Honestly, what do you think this city, a large city, if we ended up having 10 more dollars per, you know, property tax, we would be able to do? An awful lot, I'm guessing. And that, that is the point of communities and coming together, is that when we pool our resources, we can do more, and we should be doing more. So, our, you know, I, I pulled up, I was like, well, maybe I'm, you know, just one of these lucky ones, but our unemployment rate, according to census, whatever, is at 5.8%. Not perfect. I mean, gosh, we all want it to be zero, but it's less than the national average of 6%. So I think we can handle maybe another $10. So, anyway, that's, that's my point. You know, thank you for your time and your effort. I know you guys put in so many hours, and it's so appreciated, everything that you do, every single person that sits around this table. So, thank you, have a great night.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Anybody else wish to speak against the budget? Come on forward, sir. If you could state your name and address too, please. Can you make sure your microphone's on? It's a green button on, thanks, Tom.
Okay. We're good now, I think.
I can hear you.
Rick Humphries, I live at 460 Chestnut Street, here in town. And I want to speak, I tried to look at the budget before I came here online. I can't make heads or tails of it, I just don't have the experience to really get into the nitty-gritty, but I, I want to speak in particularly on behalf of the McMillan Library. And I see that there is a, I think, a sufficient cut that it looks like is in the budget for them. And I just want to talk about some of the hidden values of the library that I don't know if everybody is aware of and looking at when you're looking at the budget. First of all, the library is a safe place for everybody. It, there's no age requirements, there's no red tape or paperwork to go there, there's no out-of-pocket expense, and nobody says, you've been here an hour or two, you need to leave because the booth has to be available for somebody else. And I think, and off, it, it's a really important part of our community. I understand if we're in a deficit, that we have to cut somewhere. And so I'm not saying no cuts, but I want a vibrant library like we have had. I don't want a merely perfunctory library. I lived here before McMillan Library was built. I remember nothing wrong with the T.B. Scott Library. You went in and got your stuff and you went home. I talked to one city council member, and that's the library they're envisioning now, that it should be. A library, you go get your stuff, you go home. Don't want all the programs for children, the computer help, all the other things that a lot of people really very much count on and depend on in the library. And I'm really, along with Elizabeth, I, you know, would be willing to pay some more out of my taxes to have a vibrant library, rather than a very diminished library. So, that's, that's real, all I have to say, and if there's continual movement to diminish the library and really cut dramatically, I will oppose it every way I can, because I think, when I look up the definition of a city council member, there's something about representative government. So, if you're representing a small number of people and not really paying attention, but, the people I've talked to about the library since last year, the issues came up, those of you who want real diminishment library, you don't have consensus. You don't have a very large percentage of people that are on your side. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Anyone else wish to speak against the budget? I'll officially call for a second time, does anybody wish to speak against the budget? And for a third and final time, does anybody wish to speak against the budget? Okay, for the first time, does anybody wish to speak in favor of the budget? For a second time, does anybody wish to speak in favor of the budget? And for a third and final time, does anybody wish to speak in favor of the budget? I'm just going to say it once again, then. Thanks, Tim. I know you spend countless hours, days, nights, and weekends on preparing this budget for many months, and it's appreciated. Thank you. So I guess that 6:11, we'll officially close the public hearing, and we'll go on to item four, which is continued discussion regarding the 2024 City of Wisconsin Rapids budget. What are your wishes, counsel? Oh, it, just kind of raise your hand or get my attention, since we don't have the voting board. Oh, go ahead, Tim. Yep, I forgot to ask.
Sure, I, I sent out an email early this afternoon, but I'd kind of like to discuss the 2024 Mass Transit budget. As you know, we went out for a five, a five-year bid, which we're required to do that every five years, and we got it in our bids. And basically, on, based on, on the, the winning bid that we received, our local share is going up fairly dramatically. The local share, based on that, is going to be about $286,000 for the past three years. It's been, for 20, 21, and 22, it's been, there's been no local share because during that period, we received additional federal funds, ARPA, CARES Act funds, that offset the local share, so that they made, you know, with the COVID and things like that, they, they made sure there was no local share. But, now that we're seeing an increase in the, the bid rate, and the bid rate is, you know, the bid times the average, or the actual driver hours, and I, you know, projected out a three-year average driver hours at the current bid rate, according, through the process, and we get a total contract cost of $1,371,859. Federal and state funding funds an estimated 54.7% of that, which is $750,407. So that leaves a balance of $621,452. Now then, we are able to subtract off the fare revenue that's received through the Mass Transit program, and based on a three-year average, about $335,000, which leaves a local share of 286,275. Part of the reason why we're seeing such a large increase in that is that the bid prices for the past number of years have been low, but we're seeing across all the state, Mass Transit state programs, that those are really jumping up, and, you know, we were talking with the state, and they're saying a lot of communities are seeing this kind of big increase in the local share. Because basically, the, your revenues are fairly, when I look at the revenues over the past number of years, and the projected revenues, those are relatively around the same amount. But when those revenues were being subtracted off, a lower, lower contract rate in previous years, before we saw this increase in them, our local share was fairly low. So, that's kind of one of the reasons why it's jumping up. Now, we had kind of just estimated in the budget for, for 2024, what's in there is $106,197, which leaves a projected deficit of $180,000. Throughout the years, you know, obviously when we had no local share, or our local share came in less than what we anticipated over the years, we retained those funds in the Mass Transit Fund, because we count for it separately. So we have Mass Transit reserves of $246,773 that will, that we can use to offset at least the 2024 for share, but obviously for the 25 budget, you know, since those are one times revenues, it's going to be something that we're going to have to address. And that can be addressed through, you know, you can address through, you know, controlling your costs through operational hours, driver hours, you know, your, your fare rates and things like that, so that's something that we might want to look at. And, you know, I had talked to the mayor earlier, and what I'd like to propose is that, you know, we had our Mass Transit Evaluation Committee, and I would kind of like to keep that committee together, so that, on a periodic basis, whether when we file our quarterly reports with the state, that we can review it, look at things, things, how it's going, and then, you know, kind of assess the program as it goes, be a little bit more proactive. So, but that's, I just want to say, so, we're going to, I'll probably, we're going to have to adjust the budget for that, but at least for, for this year, or for 2024, we, we have sufficient reserves from less than anticipated local shares throughout the years, but in 2025, we'll have to address that again.
I just wanted to add some context to that, that the Mass Transit Program went through the RFP process, and so that doesn't necessarily allow you to take, there's several criteria. So you don't just get to pick one company or another, there's scoring systems, and you have to do it bipartisan, essentially. So, that, that's how, I'm assuming the change was, was made, so it's, when, when you speak to the increased costs, it wasn't something that was chosen to be there necessarily, it was through the RFP process.
Right, I mean, we would have had an increased cost, whether which
Right.
proposal was taken, so, it's because of that escalation in contract costs. And I have a document, and, you know, I plan to kind of do a memo, just explaining the process for the council, and then also include, I have a thing of listing all the bid rates for all the Mass Transit programs in the state, to kind of give you an idea of where things are at. I mean, basically, our, our previous contract rate was well below a lot of the other communities that have the Mass Transit program, but you're seeing this, you know, increase across the state in these contract bids.
And pricing is a factor in the RFP bids, and there's a score appropriate for it, and there's other areas, but I'm not going to get into all that, but when you say proactive, keep the transit committee together, is that to keep an eye on ra, rates, or
Right.
fees per ride to make sure that it's sufficient enough to cover the fund? Or what, what would you be looking at of that committee?
Yeah, I think it would just be kind of assessing on a quarterly basis, you know, the activity in there, and looking at some of those factors, you know, service hours, you know, the, the number of drivers on the road, you know, where our revenues are coming at, so that, you know, if we feel that we need to make adjustments to some of those, we can. So, I mean, there is some local control over your cost, right? So, and that's what I mean, it's just kind of just, and then also looking at, you know, complaints that we get, and addressing those complaints, and how we can work with the provider to, to minimize those complaints.
Will we have data during those meetings about, so for example, if we're trying to control costs, not saying we're going to do this, but if we're trying to control costs, and we look at service hours, and there's a really low amount, or really low traffic during a certain period of service hours, are we going to have that data available to be able to make those decisions?
Hopefully, yeah.
Okay.
And, and we, over the years, there, there have been adjustments in hours, you know, to that, it's just that we just have to notice, you know, if we adjust our hours, we have to notice it in the paper, send it to the state, so they approve it and things like that. But, it's just being a little bit more proactive, and also that you get a little bit more council involvement, and how the program works, and how it's performing. And, and especially, you know, you know, with the complaint side, that if we see a number of complaints coming in of a certain nature, that we can work with the, the provider to, to rectify those.
And then, Tim, while I got you, I think you're the right person to speak to on this, but a couple of folks had brought up regarding the taxes, and I was wondering if you could speak to assessment and the tax levy, and how that all works. It's not a decision, as if we, we can just raise taxes, that's controlled by the state on what our power is on that, but it more so has to do with assessment. And, Tim, if you could talk more to that, what?
You know, obviously, a number of factors, you know, go into, you know, what a taxes are on a particular property, you know, obviously you have the initial assessment. If there's improvements made to the property, obviously that can, that can increase the assessment, which, you know, obviously affects the taxes. Also, you know, with classes of property, you know, when, when you go through a reassessment, depending on your class of property, it may go up more than the average, or less than the average, and that can affect, you know, the amount of taxes. So you can actually go through a reassessment, and if your property increases less than the average property throughout the city for that class, and a lot of that's residential, you know, that can affect your taxes, or if it goes up more than the average. All depends on the class of the, the style of the residential property and things like that. Obviously, the assessor can speak more eloquently about that than I can, but, you know, that's one fact. But, also a big factor in what we can raise taxes, is that we've been under levy limits since 2006. And, that restricts your property tax levy from going up based on the percentage of net new construction. So, to give you an idea, this year, you know, we had net new construction of $4,738,000, which was a .349%. That allowed, that restricted that the city could only raise its tax levy for operating purposes by $42,206. And if you look at, I just, I just quick did some figures here, I have a net, kind of a history of net new construction, 11-year history, and the average over the 11 years is $110,000, that's what our levy could go up on average over that 11-year period each year. So, it's, you know, obviously, you know, you, you could raise, you know, the levy, you know, for, for debt service, because that's excluded from it, but basically, we're restricted to net new construction, and obviously, you know, $42,000 on a $30, $40 million budget, you know, isn't all that much.
Thank you, Tim. So to follow up on that, in the comments that were made, we, we don't have a choice in whether or not we can ask you guys to pay more taxes for the services that the city provides, and that's, that's where we lead into what has been the theme of what I feel the whole budget season, it's been a season, multiple meetings, is that we provide services, and we've added services, or we need to add staffing to maintain the same services, however, we don't have revenue to cover that. And, that's, that's why I've spoken, we took a tentative vote last week, and I vote against the budget, because I think we need to do two things to get to a balanced budget and away from a deficit, and one, Tim just talked about, which we can get there through growth, net new construction, and the other is, we need to control spending, not just at budget time, but throughout the year. And, when we don't do that, we, we're in a situation where we talk about a deficit, we talk about debt, and that is the theme of really budget season, is whether or not you want to take on that debt, or what services you want to provide versus others. And we're really restricted by providing those services based on the amount of revenue we bring in, which is determined by the state, and what Tim said was 2006, when they put in levy limits, so that's what we're, we're stuck with, and, and have to manage a budget off that every year.
Can I recognize her, or is it a public hearing?
You can recognize her.
Thank you, Jake, for recognizing me. So, a question about that. Are we actually, and maybe for Tim, are we using, are we going up to our levy limits for spending each year?
We're going over.
So... So you just told me that we're not allowed to go over, and I'm sorry, I'm not an accountant.
We, we're not, we're not allowed to raise taxes. So we take out debt over the levy limit.
Okay. And, we're not allowed to ask residents whether, you know, have a referendum on, you know, whether to raise an amount for city, you know, services?
Yeah, you can have a referendum to exceed your levy limits.
But the council has to approve going to a-
Right, it's not a elector, or citizen-led effort, it would have to be the council, would have to make a determination that they want to exceed the levy limit, so they would pass a resolution, and they'd have to say how much it is for, and for how long, and then, once they pass that resolution, then that would go to the, for a referendum.
And when was the last time that we've had a referendum like that?
We have never had a referendum like that.
Okay. And has the council considered having a referendum like that?
No.
No.
To, you know, at least kind of, you know, make things a little more even? I mean, I know, I know what situation we're in at the state, and I know that, you know, the limits are there. I don't agree with those limits, at all. I think, you know, it's, you know, basically, cutting cities, you know, municipalities off at the knees, but I think that, you know, as a municipality, I think we need to utilize the tools that we have, and, you know, take some bold actions to, you know, to ask the citizens. I mean, the citizens actually approved, you know, the Wisconsin Rapids Public School referendum by a wide margin, because it was something that they saw that would be well-managed and that we needed, and I think the city council needs to do the same. So, thank you, Jake.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, usually, the, to go to exceed the levy limits is for something specific project, it's usually not for, hey, we just need extra money. But, I'm glad, Patrick.
Okay, so the levy limits were put in place, obviously, for situations where there's runaway governments overtaxing their population. When you bring up a, a tax bill for a property under $70,000, I don't think that represents the average tax property assessment in Wisconsin Rapids. Also, you had, the other gentleman had spoken to a reduction in the library, and there's nothing that stops you from going down to the library and writing out a check yourself? Getting a couple of friends to do that? As with a lot of things, you can, you can donate to whatever it is that you, your heart desires. The fact is, is that even at 17, over $1,700, tax assessment, the state average would be saving over $500 if our tax rate was at the state average, and it's not. And then you could take that $500 and spend it how you like. That's all.
Yeah, I'd like to speak on the comment made about the library budget, too. The budget that was presented by the library director was approved without any cuts. We didn't take anything out. Right, Catherine? I mean, you presented the budget, and it, nothing was removed, so.
Also, I think we should note, Kyle and Stacy are in the audience, you were given, I don't know, was it yesterday, we received a contract, kind of a outlining of a contract? I didn't know if you wanted to discuss that at all, or if you want to save it for a future finance meeting, save it. Okay. But, if you hadn't seen it yet, you have a contract in your email that was put together by Kyle and Stacy worked on it, and it's actually really good. Well, I think the budget, he has $25,000 earmarked, or just kind of like as a placeholder, but, so if that, something changes, then it can be a budget transfer resolution somewhere else, but it doesn't have to be done tonight.
Have you read the contract? I, I spoke to Stacy about it. To me, the contract is, I'll bring it up here quick, but, let me see. The contract really just highlights over what they already do, so, just what the chamber operates and does overall. So, it, to me, it beats the purpose of us even going forward and having them do a contract. We could have just gave them the money, and they're going to do what they want. So if we have any specific asks, I think we need to take the time to have a meeting on what we would like in there. So, specifically, you know, if, if there was something that the council wanted to see in there, at this point, we have not taken the time to discuss the contract that was sent to us, and if we just move forward and approved it, I don't know why we even had the discussion with, around the chamber in general, because it really just details the services they already do in the nature of their business. I don't know. Yeah, so what are you thinking?
I think maybe a closed session at the next finance meeting?
Yeah.
Would that make sense?
Right.
Just a thought. Then you guys can talk in closed session, and if you have anything specific you're looking for. Uh, does anybody else have anything for the good of the order? We don't need a motion, do we, Tim? Or do you want a motion to forward it to kind of the final budget, so you can prepare the levy resolution for council?
I, I guess if there's, I mean, if there's no changes, I mean, obviously, this new document reflects changes from the last committee of the whole, but those, those were, motions were made on those, so, I guess, I guess you, and the, and the two changes were, you know, we applied the, it was motion, the motion carried to apply the FEMA funds towards street construction, and the second motion was to the Humane Society contract at 86.5, and those two changes are reflected in here. As far as on the last page, 26 tax calculations, I just want to point out that all of them are set, the Wisconsin Rapids, mid-state, and the school district, the only one we're waiting for is- The only one we're waiting for is Wood County. They have their public hearing the morning of the 14th, and so we'll get those, their levy amounts, and that's, we'll adjust it. And then just, just kind of a, to point out that, you know, with the state tax credit, that's also an estimate. The good news is, is that as part of the Act 12, they increased the school levy credit monies by $240 million, so it was about a 27% increase. So we'll probably see a, a larger credit applied to the tax bills, but we don't know that amount because that's based on a three-year average of school, of our local school districts' levy compared to the, the state, all the state school levies. And so based on that calculation, that determines our, our credit that's applied to the tax bills. But obviously, the pot of money went up by 27%, so we'll most likely see an increase in that credit, which is good.
Thank you, Tim. So, anything further for the good of the order? Okay, we're on to item number five. A motion by Raheem, second by Katna, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Anybody oppose? All right, motion carries. Thank you, everybody. Good night.